I'm like, where is right here? What are you talking about? Burl would not. Hey, turns out I do. Good, hey, good luck.
Gary said, let's get the road on the, this road on the show or what? The show on the road, one of those.
I've brought to order the special meeting of the city council, the city runs as fast, August twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen at six P M.
Okay.
The item we're going to discuss, the first one would be on demolition cleanup program.
Let me kick it off, Mayor, and I'll just be here. And then we're going to turn it over to city attorney for the PowerPoint. And other staff members will maybe ask various questions on this issue. But the purpose for tonight's presentation on demolition, on the demolition section is, there was an episode where two buildings were beyond repair located on city property. And if someone had been injured or killed, as you well know, the city would have been liable in that particular case. We, and as you have, have several of you pointed out to us, maybe we acted too aggressively on that, but it worked, it did work. The buildings are coming down, however, we've heard your concerns, heard those, some of the valid concerns, and that your concerns initially anyway, that we may be acted too aggressively. So, we want to present to you what, what our plan is for the area of demolition and as it relates to cleaning up the community. But we also want to hear from you and hear what your concerns are, and hopefully we'll reach a middle point here that would allow staff to move forward as far as demolitions and cleaning up the community. We have your concerns, very valid, and then want to compare that to the presentation you'll hear from Roxanne in just a minute. Before we get to that, I want to point out that in the recent survey, there was a question, how do you rate the overall appearance of the city? And those are directly tied to what we're talking about tonight. Seventy percent rate the appearance as fair to poor. Of that number, thirty-eight percent said cool. Only twenty-five percent said good, and a tiny amount, two percent said excellent. That's not a good number, I've been working with the surveys like this for a number of years, and those numbers can be improved. How important is code enforcement to the city, another question in the survey? Only twenty-five or fifteen percent said very important, and thirty-seven percent said important. That, when you add those together, important and very important, that comes out to ninety-five percent, that's, that's an astronomical figure, saying code enforcement's important to the city or very important. How would you describe Aransas Pass as a place to live, another question? Fifty-seven percent said excellent to good. It should be closer to the area of between sixty and seventy percent, not doing badly, but we can improve on that, which is part of the topic for tonight. Forty-three percent said fair to poor. And interestingly, citizens did not rank downtown high, fifty-eight percent said downtown was fair to poor, thirty-nine percent said good to excellent. We can improve in that area too. Hence, takes us back to the purpose of tonight's meeting. Staff has a plan they want to present to you and how we can improve those numbers. And really, the survey means what happened at that particular moment in time. Want to measure it again next year and see how those numbers come out. And, and we're hopeful that citizens will begin to see improvement in this area, we all do. And want to present that plan to you tonight, but want to take into consideration what your concerns are and see if we can reach that middle ground. With that said, I'm going to ask Roxanne to show you a PowerPoint.
My name is Roxanne Faisco Thorneo, I'm the city attorney for the city of Aransas Pass, and I have some great news. The great news is this structure that you see up on the TV screen is not in the city of Aransas Pass.
Well, good.
Thank goodness. That's great news. That was to make y'all's minds start thinking. It is not in the city of Arans- He's even greater news, the greater news is you have a very strong, advocate, forward-moving, quick responding city attorney, that when she thinks you want something done, she immediately gets it done. And so on a scale from one to ten, ten being the most aggressive, I think I've been maybe a one, but I will go into my points, my point fives for you if I need to, so, trust me, I know how to get more aggressive. I don't intend to, I intend to follow what you want me to do, you are the client, you're the most important, you represent the citizens of this great city, so I'm going to take your direction and how you want to proceed. But with doing that, I feel like it's certainly my goal to make sure that you make an informed, as well-educated decision with the law to do so. So, I'm hoping I turned this on, right? And, I don't think I did. I'm supposed to point somewhere? Okay. Thank you. Demolitions, I kept hearing demolitions were so important to our city, and so, for the past couple of months, the building official, the code enforcement official, and of course, our one and only M and M, I call her M and M, who works for our building official, had been meeting behind closed doors. And we had been trying to gather information to understand what's happening in the city with, as regards to vacant dilapidated structures. And it became very clear to us, as we were in this meeting, talking to each other and learning from each other and teaching each other, that there are two kinds of structures, really, when it comes to vacant dilapidated structures. So, for easy purposes, there are black structures and there's gray structures. Let me tell you what a black structure is. A black structure, this is the term that we as staff use, so we know what it means. A black structure is a structure that you just cannot repair it. It's bad, it's got to come down, there's no way you can fix it. A gray structure to us means that structure looks bad, it can be repaired, depending on how much money you want to spend on it. And sometimes people want to spend an extraordinary amount of money to repair something for various reasons, whether it be historic or personal. So, we made it clear when we were putting at the presentation together and proceeding forward, that we were not going to deal with the gray structures. Right now, we're just going to deal with those black structures, those horrible, gotta-go, out-of-sight structures. So, what we did is, we got in the car, and we drove around town. And this is what we found involving black structures. So, you can proceed with pictures. Yep. Yep.
Yes. Yes. It's gone now, thank you, Lord. That is, that needs to go.
Our building official was so nice to put these eight structures on a map for us. Now, we know there's a lot more structures, but these are the black structures. So, I'm going to ask that Mary pass out that map to you, so you'll get an idea of where they're located within our city, and thank our building official for that map.
So, were you just looking at commercial or what, in general?
Well, in those eight structures, only one is residential and the remaining are commercial. We definitely were strategizing as a team to get, to spend our time for the bangest, the biggest buck, the biggest bang for the biggest buck. In other words, if we're going to spend our time, we want to make sure that it gives the biggest reward back to the city. And so, commercial structures tend to do that, and we'll talk about that in a little bit in a second. But those seven are commercial and one is residential. Out of those eight structures that you just looked at, I decided to ask the chief a very important question. I said, "Chief, any time the police responds to a nine-one-one call, what does that cost?" And he said, "That's, you know, big variation." I understand, but just generally, average time, what do you think it costs? The response was four hundred and fifteen dollars per call. Out of these eight structures, in the past three years, those eight structures only have received a hundred and forty-eight calls for police service. Only those structures. If you take a hundred and forty-eight structures and you times that by four hundred and fifty dollars, you get sixty-seven thousand dollars, approximately. It's actually a different number if you calculate it, but it was an ugly number, so I rounded it up to sixty-seven.
Six-six-six.
But don't worry, you did get some taxes out of it. You got, over the past three years, eighteen thousand. So, you're in the red when it comes to these properties, it's costing you as a city money. Let's talk about those costs, crime cost. So, not only do the police have to respond, and we know that's four hundred and fifty dollar per call cost, Austin, Texas actually did a study. And I tell you about Austin because I'm going to tell you about cities around the country, they have these same problems. And while we don't know exactly the numbers for Aransas Pass, it'll give you an idea of what's happening around the country. In Austin, they did a study where they found that if you had a dilapidated structure on one block, the crime on that one block was two times higher than a block that didn't have substantial structure. There's also fire cost. Dilapidated vacant structures typically don't have sprinkler systems in it. The U.S. Fire Administration says that there are twelve thousand fire calls in response to vacant structures per year. And out of those twelve thousand fire calls, six thousand firefighters are injured on those calls, per year. Some cities actually have mowing and cleaning budgets. That is, they have staff or they have vendors that will go and mow and clean the vacant lots, even though the sub vacant structure is still up, they at least try to keep the rodents away or down as much as possible. Gosh, some cities spend a lot of money on this, to give you an example, Detroit, large city, but a city almost in bankruptcy, they actually spent eight hundred thousand dollars a year in mowing and cleaning cost. Yeah. Of course, there's your code inspector cost. So, it's not just the police responding, but it's the code inspectors who respond to work on the property, whether it be the vehicle or the gas or the equipment or the training, that is a cost you should consider as well. And then cities, you know, we sometimes have those property owners that don't want to demolish the structure, no matter what you do, from a city's perspective. And so, cities often have budgets to demolish structures. And that is, we will use the city's funding to demolish the structure and then lean the structure, or lean the land to recoup that funding. St. Louis actually spent, over a five-year period, fifteen point five million dollars in demolitions. There's always the lawyers involved when it comes to this, and that is always a cost. Lower property value, so if you have a dilapidated structure, the structure that the property is on is going to have a lower property value because of the dilapidated structure, right? That makes sense. Philadelphia did a study, and the dilapidated structure, if you built a radius around it of three hundred feet, every structure within that three hundred feet radius of that dilapidated structure had a reduction of property values by an average of six point, six point eight, six, in other words, six thousand eight hundred, seven thousand dollars. It didn't even just extend there, it actually went out a little bit more. And the further they went out, of course, the less the expense became, but the properties within three hundred feet had lower property values of about seven thousand, and also sold for less than seven thousand than they would have, had the dilapidated structure not been there. And then the last cost we probably should think about, and there's so many costs if you actually think about, the all realms of possibility, we're giving you the basics that we know of. The next cost would not only just be the property and the surrounding property, but it's also the sales tax. One of the saddest stories, I think I've heard so far on Aransas, has been Miss Butler, she used to have the Y Fish Market, she's an incredible lady. We sat down and met with her and talked to her, very nice woman. She's trying to figure out what she's going to do with her building too, in fact, we met with her shortly after we met with the previous owner. She actually told us that in her prime, that property had about two hundred employees working, and had about two hundred employees that were shipping fish and shrimp all the way to New York. So, can you imagine, two hundred employees working in our city? That's a lot of food, a lot of gas, a lot of movement. And so, that sounds exciting, never mind the property value or the sales tax value or the personality property tax value. And that's just one structure. Those are the costs that we need to think about when we think about these eight dilapidated structures that are considered black structures, not gray structures. So, how do we resolve this? The reality is that there are so many legal tools that we can use, but I want to make it really simple for you. And so, I'm going to throw up some legal methods that can be used. In fact, any one of them can be used at any time regarding the fact scenario, but I want to educate you on what those legal methods are. The first one would be just a meet and greet. And this is one of those situations where you just call the property owner, lien holder or mortgagee in, and you talk to them, and you ask them what's going on? Why, you know this is dilapidated, why haven't you gotten it down? Is there something that we as a city can do to help you? And depending on how that meeting goes, you know, you could proceed on how you feel best. Usually, there's compliance in those meet and greets, and we figure out a way how to make it work. What's the percentage? Usually about ninety-eight percent of the time they'll comply. And in that compliance, we meet with them again, whether it be two weeks or four weeks, depending on the situation. We meet with them for fifteen minutes, it's really not that expensive, but it's an update for all of us to know what's going on and to see the progress that's being made. Here's another legal method. We can always have your code inspector issue notices of violations and citations for these dilapidated structures. If we issue the citations, the property owners will have to appear before the municipal court judge, and they will have to enter a plea, because at this point, it's a criminal offense, not just a meet and greet. In the criminal offense, they could be cited for penalties up to two thousand dollars per violation, per day. They could go in front of the judge and just plead guilty or no contest and pay for the penalty. Usually, the penalties upfront are just two hundred and fifty dollars, or at least two hundred and fifty dollars, that's a lot cheaper than having to demolish the structure. But they could also plead not guilty and ask to see your prosecutor, me. At that point, they would have to come back for a second court date with me to talk to them. Here's another option. Another option is your Buildings and Standards Commission. This is a group of people appointed by you, the city council, to serve on the city board. And they, in essence, are a quasi judicial board, that means that they actually have power and authority to issue orders. But these people on this board have specialties, you've appointed them because of those specialties. They too would sit like a judge and listen to the property owner and evaluate, and they have the authority as a board to order the property owner to demolish or to repair or to vacate the building, all within a certain time period. And if they don't do it, the property owner, they have the authority to order penalties of up to two thousand dollars per day, per violation. Usually, these types of properties can have anywhere from a hundred to two hundred violations on them. Another method is just to file a lawsuit against the property owner, a civil lawsuit. We often refer to these as chapter fifty-four lawsuits, because they're chapter fifty-four of the local government code. But these lawsuits usually are reserved for those worst property owners, we often refer to them as slum lords. These are the property owners where it's less expensive to pay attorney than it is for them to continue to have the property. Does that make sense? And there are a lot of people like that. Usually, property owners, if they're sued, it'd be cheaper for them to demolish the structure than it would actually be to pay a lawyer to defend them in a civil court lawsuit. But, the civil lawsuits can be a positive thing for gray properties, because we can file a lawsuit asking the court to appoint a third-party person who can repair the property that the property owner won't repair. And will give title to that third-party person if the property owner doesn't pay it back within a certain time period. It's called receivership. Third-party receives the property and nurses and takes care of it, gets it back online and productive, and gets to keep it if the property owner doesn't pay it. So, good things can come out of those civil lawsuits. These are four different random methods, they can be applied to any property at any point, and usually, actually, we're using two of those methods right now. We're using the meet and greet, we have since stopped since there was concern, but we've also issued out notices of violations and citations, and those are for properties that need to be repaired. In fact, I wish I could tell you all the success stories that we've actually had in court, right, Corey and Burl? We'll get to those some other day. But those two methods are currently being used, the two are not, two others are not, the civil lawsuit and the Buildings and Standards Commission. At this point, we're seeking direction from the council and what your thoughts are, what do you want to see, and how nice or aggressive you feel like your city attorney needs to be with staff, based on the severity and the complexity of these problems. I do know that the higher you get, the harder it gets, and so, as mayor and city council members, you have an overwhelming burden to resolve these kinds of issues. I wish you the best of luck in making those decisions. I'm here to serve your city to the best of my ability under your direction. To follow up, in front of you, there should be a document. It was written in 2000, I believe. The US Department of Justice hired me to work with them on publishing this document. It is on the federal website. It is a document that talks about not just enforcing dilapidated structures and what to do with them, but strategies on how to prevent from getting those kind of structures. And most importantly, strategies on how to reuse or rebuild the vacancies or the dilapidated structures. So while this presentation has been about enforcement in the future, rest assured that our team is very much aware of how to prevent them and how to reuse them, and we'll be glad to make that presentation at a future date under your direction. Thank you.
I have a question. On the seven properties, I know two of them, the city properties, do we know if the owners of these properties are local people, or they're out-of-towners that have just abandoned these properties?
I would say out of the structures that we have looked, maybe two of them are out of state, is my recollection. The remaining are in town. Because that makes a big difference.
My question is, do we allow $150,000 in the budget? So could those be part of that 30 buildings that we're going to tear down?
Demolition?
Yeah.
It was 100, and we took 25, so we have 75, which is, that's a workable number.
But those are part of it, right? Those particular buildings that we just saw?
Well, the number, we just have an amount in there, how it's to be used, that has to be determined.
Are we going to make that priority list of which ones are first to be tore down between the start and finish?
We can't tear anything, I'm not sure, quite sure, I understand the question, Mayor. Let me make sure I understand. The seven structures that you've seen today are the worst of the worst. We have additional structures on the list that need to be addressed. These seven structures, out of the seven, only two of the property owners have been contacted. We have not contacted any others as a result of concerns that were expressed after speaking to the first two. So at this point, it's my understanding that city staff, and certainly myself, I'll speak for myself, I've done nothing involving demolitions, other than place this PowerPoint together for you. We would need to contact the property owners, lien holders, and mortgagees before we moved forward to demolish anything. The problem is that we're using city funds if we demolish the structure, but you should only use city funds if the property owner's not going to do it.
I think what you're asking is, have we prioritized the black ones? Those are the ones that we're talking about here. I don't know, Ron Sanz, I'm going to be wrong, I don't know that prioritization makes any difference. We can start with any one of those, and choose any one we want.
I just figured that the most dangerous to the least one to be taken away, the ones that, like you were saying, it costs so much money for the response of everything, like, I mean, could you like actually get on those property owners and say, "You know what? Either you clean it up, or we're going to clean it up."
I think that's what she was waiting to get direction from the council.
I was just curious about if they were.
If you, what we're asking.
It's easy to prioritize it that way, sir, yes.
If you're in favor of us moving forward with the black ones, then we will aggressively, well, that's wrong.
You'll tiptoe.
But yes, I was just curious about.
We will systematically address those black ones, and we can prioritize, as Ron Sanz said, but we just need direction from you, if you're okay with that, we will start going after that. I'll also need to ask, is there something we need to stay away from? You know what some of the issues were in the last one? Is there something that you're uncomfortable that we should stay away from?
No, just in the way it happens.
Well, see, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, if I could, the only thing that I know that we're talking about, or talking around, we were told that the property on Allen was... Let me ask this question. Was the property Lee C., because it's Lee's property at Allen, was he informed and spoken to about these dilapidated buildings, that needed to come down, that needed to be taken care of? Was he spoken to and knew of them from a city perspective before that meeting?
It's a very good question. I can tell you the story that I know from my facts and my truth. My facts and my truth is that, at no cost to the city, I oftentimes drive around the city to dream, think, strategize, recall. Yes. I want you to know that I do that with you. I saw these structures on the harbor, we've spent a lot of time on the harbor involving other issues, and I thought, "Oh, my God, what is this?" And it's on city property. I contacted the harbor master on the phone one evening and said, "Who owns these structures?" He goes, "Well, they're city-owned." I said, "Okay, what, who's the tenant?" And he gave me the tenant's name. I said, "Well, I have all the harbor leases, I'm going to read the lease." I read the lease immediately, found in the lease that the tenant was responsible for evading the nuisances. I contacted the harbor master back. I said, "I understand that they are responsible for evading these nuisances, why haven't we gotten this done yet?" I said, "You know, can you set up a meeting so that I can talk to the property owner to find out what's the problem?" And he said, "Well, I know the property owner, and I talk to him almost every day, I can set that up." I said, "Great." I said, "By the way," and this is where I think some confusion came in, I said, "The city has $25,000 in its budget right now to demolish structures if a property owner is not going to demolish it. But that $25,000 is set for this budget year, it has to be spent by September 30th." I said, "So it may be that if he can't demolish it, we can demolish it, but it'd have to be a lien on the lease." The harbor master hung up the phone with me, apparently contacted the tenant, called me back probably about an hour later, and harbor master told me that he was able to schedule that meeting. And I said, "Well, how did it go? How did the tenant take the fact that we wanted to talk to him about this?" He said, "Well, I just told him that you had some free grant money you could give him."
That's what I heard.
That's why that person right there, meet and greet, is very important.
Very much so.
That's not what I said. You'd have to ask the harbor master about whether or not he would agree with that statement, but that's what I have written in my notes that he said. And I said, "That's not what I said." Anyway, the meeting was scheduled for the following Monday, which was just a few days later, and the tenant came in with another person, and we talked, we were nice, we were all very professional. We were also very transparent. And transparent in that we told him what the options were. The most biggest concern was, this is city property, and it's our house, and if I'm going to go after the other structures that are not in our house, what right do I have to do that when our house is so dirty? So I felt more importantly than that, and the staff did as well, this is a structure that's not only on city property, but it's open to anyone to walk on, and if someone was to get hurt or killed, the city will be sued. And so it was important that we be fair and transparent, and that we give the options, because every minute or every hour that ticked by was a risk. I think the mayor would agree that the tenant did say that I was nice, along with some other things. And it would be an accurate depiction, based on what the mayor has told me. But that's what you pay me to do, is to protect you and defend you, and that's what we were doing as a team that day.
So from what you said there, is there a different approach you would like to take? Say, you're interested in meet and greet, is there a different way to start it?
Well, I think she has the right direction. I think when the harbor master said, "Know the guy, I'll take care of it, let me handle it," I think that's where it went awry.
Yep, 100%.
So I think he's going to be, I think he's going to be out of the equation at this point for all new demolitions, or...
It's all about how you approach the situation, to make sure we have the right communication between the person that you're speaking to, and what they're getting cited for and whatnot. And the other point that I want to make is, if it's going to become literally a burden to that citizen, we need to find some way for it not to be a burden for them, okay? So, because I know there's plenty of resources out there to be able to help them out, and I'm talking about the elderly, right? I mean, and the fact of the matter is, you ask, we need to clean the town, and you ask, we need to do all that, we just need to take the right approach. And whatever there might be, I think that relies on y'all.
And I think the most part is, give us the most important, like the ones, the seven that you've given us, right, you know, starting with these, you know, meet with them, greet with them, and just follow the steps in just keeping us posted, you know, on where, you know, what's the next step? You've taken care of this, this is what's happened, and these are the next ones. Now we're going into the gray buildings, those kind of things. And just letting us know, because we, and, you know, we can address, well, is there something else, knowing, you know, most of us, you know, a lot of us know a lot of the people that live in town, you know, is there something that we can help? Is there a volunteer group that we can get, tap on, you know, Boy Scouts or whoever?
Now we get to the point that you got to get. It is what it is.
Can each individual, there's different approaches on a personal level that can be picked? I'm not doing my own tour, but I can't, I don't think you can say that I have not worked with people.
I agree with you.
I've heard a lot of good stuff about you.
Me too.
I try to help them to get to work, I need to be, but, just that being said, don't think for a second, guys, that you're not going to get these phone calls from these people.
Oh, yeah.
You need to have all of the time, and not just their side. You have to lead the strength, and everybody makes mistakes, they may happen. If I make a mistake, I'll pass up.
I'll tell you what, the mistake that I think that was made, and that I will take fault for, and I will claim guilty, I'm not going to claim that I was rude, because I'm not, I wasn't, I was very nice, we were very transparent, we were very open, in fact, we were trying to be community-oriented, because we tried to reach out to somebody who knew the tenant to say, you know, "Hey, we need to talk about this." And unfortunately, maybe that didn't go as planned. One's down.
One to go.
Yeah.
So have they started demolition on this building?
On the Allen, one's down.
Okay.
The other one's almost down.
Yeah, the one that were guilty?
Yeah.
He still has one more to go.
Yeah, he started on that one, though.
This is the guilty part. The guilty part was, as a city attorney, I did not stand before this governing body and seek permission to begin getting those demolitions down. I thought it was important off of everything that I was hearing and reading, that I just moved, because it's something I know how to do. So I moved without talking to you. And that was the mistake that I made.
I think you trusted, entrusted the wrong person. Yes, to do the initial.
Set up.
Are you okay, before, the episode we're talking about, the city attorney was involved at the beginning, and as you heard Burl say a minute ago, each case is different, but there is an opportunity where the city attorney need to be involved at the initial stage. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And if we feel that insensitive, maybe we need to make a softer approach as far as the meet and greet, not hearing from you, that may be the best, is that what that is?
Give them the benefit of the doubt.
We need to use the most effectable, effectable, or how do you say that word?
Yes, effective.
Effective.
Wait, the best one, and y'all are the ones that have the one.
I agree.
We don't, we don't need to be soft, we need to be firm.
But with grace.
We need to be firm, but we, like we said, and we're not going to involve the harbor master in any of these.
And in all fairness, I mean, the harbor master is not here, I'm telling you my truth. If I was under oath, it would be the same truth.
And I think, and one thing, you know, like we just kind of borrow from Teddy Rhodes, that we'll speak softly, but we carry a big stick, you know, start out nice, maybe start a big over there, big over here.
They need to know from the beginning, what the, you know, what we expect and what the result should be.
And I think my main concern is that we follow through, that we just don't let it, we spoke with them this month, we wait 10 months later and speak to them again. That's my main concern, because that's one of the things that they'll wait out, wait, you know, kind of sit and sit and sit and say, "Maybe the city will forget about it, they've got so much on their plate." I just want us to be consistent, that if we tell them, "In a month, we'll come and check," and we consistent and we follow up on that. Everyone.
The diligence that we have to visit and finding out who the actual owner is, who the mortgagee is, who any lien holders are, we're not going to let go of it.
That's amazing, because a lot of times, we have started things, and they go by the wayside, and I don't want that to happen again.
That's a very important point. Councilmember Brago and our staff thought about that. We figured you would want that. And so what we set up was that we do the meet and greet. There are 15 minutes for each property, not very long, straightforward, and at the end of that meeting, we schedule a follow-up meeting with that property owner. And depending on the status, it's either two weeks from now or a month from now, but there is a scheduled meeting, and those meetings are scheduled to happen on Mondays at 1:00 when I'm here on that week. So we've got that already devoted, and we just, like I said, stopped doing them, or we probably would have all seven of them down by now, but we stopped, we stopped those meet and greets. But if we're given permission, we will start back up. We're ready to go. And the great news about this as well, is not only is that first structure not in this community, but the staff has absorbed everything that I've taught them the past couple of months, and so you've got a strong staff. I could take this staff to any city in Texas and get 30 structures down per month.
Can I add one more thing to it?
Yes.
So at some point, you know how we have a lot of city property? And we own a lot of it, and a lot of people really have, or they're a lot easier to adapt to it when you lead by example, even though we do only a little bit at a time? Just say, "We start here so we can say, you know what, look at what we're doing, can y'all please do the same thing?" And I know we can't, like Gary said, you can't go out and clean up the whole thing and then say, "Do it," but we got to have a start somewhere.
That's, that's why I, I'm on the same thing you do. That's why the very first one was, in my mind, I, we can't, you'll tell people or ask people to do something that we're not going to do ourselves, because the very first one, to me, was important, not knowing the background on it, but it's our fault. So that's, I think, that's not, I can't believe it's my family.
But that's, that's fine, but, you know, we also have, like...
A lot of others.
So we call that smart demolition.
Some of them here, some of them on down Lee Berry.
We, we have some meetings set up for, I think, the world meeting.
You know, at least a little bit.
And that's an important one.
Balance.
Yeah, you can, you can.
Taking a microcosm of this, and showing that we are moving in the direction, we're asking other people to move this day.
The stars have lined up for the city, because at the same time that the Aransas Pass I S C demolishing a structure, they've got these demolition trucks gunning through the city all day long, I don't know, you notice that? You see them?
Now we see it.
So demolitions on everybody's mind right now.
Yes, we're cleaning it up.
But, that particular star was just started in the wrong way?
The other thing that you should know is, since that first meet and greet, I think staff will tell you that eight different property owners have come to the city voluntarily seeking a demolition permit.
Yay, yay.
And two of the structures that you saw out of the seven are down, with no money for demolitions spent by the city, and just a, one was a meet and greet, and the other one was voluntarily, we hear what's going on, we're coming down.
When you have a meet and greet, is there, I know you follow up in two weeks, is there like a follow-up email that says, you know, "We've agreed to this, in the next two weeks, what's going to happen," or do they walk away and they forget exactly what you were supposed to do?
to do?
We give their telephone numbers, and we, we also email, but in what form or fashion do we contact them at any time?
Good.
But what you're saying, Councilmember Moore, is something that has been done in other cities, but we were taking a less informal approach, this is just, hey, what's going on? Usually what happens after a meet and greet, if you're going to be like a number two out of the ten scale, is you actually give them documents that they sign, saying what they've agreed to that day.
What's wrong with that? What's wrong with that?
Absolutely nothing, in fact, they're on my computer to print for you, but we stopped when we were just talking.
They walk out with something like Jan said.
You walk out with that, this is what we expect out of you, and they, you know, like, oh, well, I really do need to get this done, they've signed for it, they've agreed to it, so...
And possibly the following morning, as soon as they open up their email, dear so-and-so, this is a follow-up from our meeting yesterday, this is A, B, C, D, of what we expect to happen within X, Y, Z number of days.
Right.
We can do that.
Two, two letters of, two, just something you hand them, and then something that, you know, is obviously trackable through email as well.
We can do that, and we prefer to do that, because that is evidence that we will use if we have to file a civil lawsuit about the lack of respecting the ordinances.
If there's nothing in writing, there's no contract, there's no, you know, it's all verbal.
I don't remember that.
Gosh, I didn't remember that.
I can't imagine if I would have got something in writing, I don't know how that would have turned out, Mayor.
I didn't get the letter, yeah, I didn't open up that email.
That's what I use on Rudy, I don't remember.
I think the last thing...
I didn't get the letter.
Um, the last thing is to keep the council informed, I don't, I have not sent emails directly to you, I communicate consistently with the city manager, and I know he sends out you emails, I think it's important to keep the council informed, you know, what's happened with the properties, and so I don't know how you just want me to communicate that to you. If you want it to be just as general, these are the seven that we're working on right now, there's another group next, or if you want me to send the, the addresses to the city manager to have them send to you, or you want me to send it to you.
I think just go, keep the, I would, city manager, and then he can just forward the information to us, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, whoever.
Doesn't matter.
I don't have to take them straight up emails.
Because you didn't know that we had the meet and greet.
You can send it to, send it straight to us, or to Gary?
Put it all in one group and hit...
Does it include everybody in the email, and it doesn't have to go from one to another?
And include Gary, too, I mean, include everybody in that...
And that would be okay legally?
Include everybody respond at the same time.
I'm just kind of wondering, okay, as far as...
So, I don't like to send emails down to the council members, just because that sometimes is released and shouldn't be released, or forwarded by flash, email, it shouldn't be. So, that's why I'd like to talk to you on the phone.
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever works.
We have a full agenda, but we need to...
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry for taking so much time.
No, this is important.
I think we're all on the same page.
Yep, go ahead.
Just one final thing, I have this, this will not work unless we have your support, it will not work. Uh, we'll, we'll be, we'll take this method, but at some point, we may have to defer it, huh?
You have to, yeah.
And that's when the complaints will go to you, and as long as we're communicating with you and letting you know what we're doing, we have to have your support overall.
Wasting our time.
Yep, absolutely.
As long as it's not legitimate complaints.
You mean, as long as they are?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I'm like...
You know what I mean?
I'll give you a line you can use when you get a complaint, you can call our city attorney, she's so hard, and Grace, she just tries so hard to protect our city.
I think the main thing is if you keep us informed before, you know, we're, we're prepared.
As the steps happen, met with so-and-so, they've agreed, they're moving forward, blah, 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 so that we all know.
And if someone agrees, and you're in, you're informed that they've agreed, please encourage them.
Oh, yes.
As council members.
We're excited that you agreed, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're the city of prevent...
Uh, next item is from the police department. Stephanie, you're in the meeting.
Oh, wow, vicious.
Please state your name and address for the record.
He doesn't know.
He lives next door.
Next door. Uh, Cory Elrod, code compliance officer, city of Aransas Pass.
We know, we're just kidding.
Come here, yeah, I just briefly wanted to discuss and get your guidance on something that I, I'm also addressing for the city, is debris cleanup, um, that has long expired with our FEMA contractors, so we're here, we still have that issue in neighborhoods, a bunch of, uh, construction material that's, people are still placing out on their properties, they're also placing in their alleyways. Uh, not too long ago, I, I sent out a notice, uh, and placed them on, at the city buildings, newspaper, uh, city manager sent it out in the newsletter as well, informing citizens that it's to the point where we're going to have to start possibly issuing citations for this debris to help. I don't like doing the citation, it's, it's a fix-it ticket, so if they can comply within ten days, I'll dismiss that ticket, where they won't have to even appear for court. Uh, it's been very successful for the things that I've used it for so far. Typically, what I do, whenever I come to a property violation, identify the property owner through the, uh, county appraisal district, get that information, if it's a vacant property or somebody that's left the property due to the storm, I'll send them a certified letter, give them X amount of days that it's cleaned up, and the follow-up part of it is saying that, you know, you could be cited daily for the violation. So, like I said, that's the guidance that I'm kind of seeking, if you guys are fine with that, that it could lead to them getting cited, going to court for the violation, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility from the middle of the alleyway to the middle of the street for maintenance and keeping that cleaned up. Like I said, I've had some success, some is not very successful, and I'm still trying to get, uh, so I just wanted your guidance, if you guys are fine with that, I mean, it's, uh, you know, over a year, and we still have debris that's been out there, the FEMA pickup ended back in February, March of this year, um, I know the cities put out notices to the residents, you know, telling them that, that debris tied pickup is going to end back then, but they're still placing it out there.
I guess my question is, how, um, how are you monitoring, are you going out, driving, getting complaints from, I'm asking because of the fact, the, uh, the apartment that's right behind, across the street from where the, the old Bank of America building, there, looks like they're clearing out the apartments they had, and they're dumping all their, their sofas, everything on the streets.
Across the street.
How are you, how are you addressing that? Are you, I know you can't drive up and down the, every street in Aransas Pass every day and keep up with that, so are, are you going to those pla, that particular apartment and tell them, hey, this is not allowed, you need to get your own dumpster, or how are you addressing that?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, I have sections, I try to work each week through the month, I'll, I'll do section one, two, three, four, and that's parts of the town that I try to focus on, and a majority of my stuff is complaint-driven, I'm getting people calling in, filing out code enforcement complaints about specific properties, and actually, that one was a eviction through the JP's office, um, that you were talking about.
But, okay, but the owner, but the owner, did the owner throw the things out, or who...
They had to hire a third-party con, contractor, from my understanding, with the JP's office, and it was a court order, from my understanding, what I was told by the JP, is that the third-party would go in and remove the tenant's items, they were trespass from the property, they have to put it in a public, accessible, uh, city right-of-way, basically, where anybody can go and get it, but it can't be on the property they're trespass from, that's my understanding, what I got from the JP, that's why they place the stuff in the alleyway and on the neighboring properties.
That's, that's...
That's not...
That's not right.
That's not right.
Actually, he's correct.
But we need...
This is...
That is ridiculous, because it's going to be there for two years from now.
Well, Roxanne got the statement.
He is correct, there is, the apartment lobby groups are very strong in Austin, and there is a specific statute that states exactly what he's saying, what Cory is mentioning to you. When you evict, and they don't take their stuff, you're supposed to put their stuff off the property to the nearest, the nearest point for them to collect. They are not, the original property owner that evicted is not required to clean it up.
That's ridiculous.
So, the city's...
Recently, the city of Garland, this is something that I fought on behalf of the city of Dallas twenty years ago, trying to change, and the reason I discovered this problem, just so that you know, is I was a, a young lawyer on the streets, working with the police department on the streets, and we kept going to illegal dumping sites that were on vacant land, and I started digging through the trash, because I just didn't understand, I noticed that there's always next to apartment complexes, and as I dug through the trash, that's when I saw mail that was from the apartment complexes, or, you know, or...
Yeah.
I'm running, this is an eviction, and that's what's happened throughout the entire state. The city of Garland, so that's when you see these illegal dump sites in neighborhoods, you think, who's dumping in our neighborhood? It actually was probably an eviction if you dug through the trash. We were unsuccessful in Dallas trying to change the statute, we got, we got other stuff passed, though, we got the language that allows us to do the demolitions and how to identify owners, and that's pretty important, um, we got that passed then, but the statute is very specific, the city of Garland, in the last legislative session, tried to change the statute as well, they have a lot of apartments in Garland, um, and what they were able to accomplish was permission that the city place, at the city's cost, a unit that is accessible near the property for the tenant that's evicted to come and get their stuff, and then the city could take the unit after a certain time period. So, it was all at the city's cost, so they wouldn't have open-air dumps. That's the closest they got, that just became effective this last legislative session. So, there is a big discrepancy in the law, and it is a big problem that has existed for a very long time, with very rich apartment co, apartment complex lobby group who are the force behind it. Now, these evictions are happening in residential homes as well, but the apartment complex lobby is the one who won't let anything change, because then their owners are going to have to pay for those costs, and that's a lot of money out of their own pocket. Does that make sense to everyone? Did I, did I, did I explain that clearly?
Yeah, you did.
Roxanne, is there anything that would, uh, prevent the city from going by and then disarming that property after sitting out there for a certain amount of time?
I think that you would have to treat it the same as you would any trash, you'd have to give a notice to whatever property it's on, um, but they're going to come back with this was an eviction. The other thing the city of Garland was able to pass was, they are not supposed to put the trash in a city public street, or a city sidewalk, or a city passageway, that's brand new, so I'm not exactly sure where this trash is at.
That's right.
But it's not going, here's the problem, chief, the problem is, is it's not going to be on the evictor's land, because they're trespass from it, so it's going to be on the first, next vacant land, or the neighbor's land, and so you'll be issuing a citation or a notice of violation to a property owner who probably, who didn't put it there, and that's where, and then these council members are going to get that phone call, so that's where the conflict comes in, that's how Garland resolved it, by getting permission to place a disposal on the site that's accessible, it's a real problem, it's existed for a great long time.
That's ridiculous, because I know that what they're doing it is that they're putting it at the old drive-through at the bank.
Yeah.
That's what they're stacking it up, and I think it's on the alleyway, I think.
It's on the alleyway.
And it's just all over the place there. That's ridiculous.
I have the legislation and the legislative history for that right in front of you here, if you'd like a copy of it.
So, technically, we can do nothing about that. That is, that's crazy.
You can notice, though, or that it's on, where the trash is at.
Oh, that's even worse, not going to do nothing, I can tell you that.
You're just hurting a third party, I guess it depends on...
Well, it's not the third party getting there for illegal dumping.
But they're not illegal dumping, they have a statute that gives them the actual express authority to do that.
Well, is it okay, so the person who's, you know, whose property, if that stuff gets put on, does he have the right to get rid of that crap on his own?
No, sir.
You mean, he stuck with, he stuck with somebody else's crap?
Yes, sir.
Ah, I think...
The city comes and dumps someone else's trash on my property, and I don't have the right to get rid of it?
The hell you say, I'll do that.
Well, it's on your property.
What do you mean, it's not our property? If they put it on our property...
I think I misunderstood the question.
No, like you'd like say, okay, WA, they pull out all their stuff, it's got to be removed from property, okay, then they said, where is it on my property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that shit's on my property.
That's right.
That crap's on my property, down the road.
That's right, and that's what, you're going to call the city, you're going to say, I didn't put it there, it's not my stuff, somebody illegally dumped, we're going to go out there, we're going to say, okay, it's an eviction, that's why the city of Garland got permission for cities to put portable units next to these...
Well, one thing, I'm not going to go to all that trouble, I'm going to call that stuff home.
And what will happen is that the city has to come and pick it up, at no cost to anybody, because you're right, you were the victim, and the apart, and the evictor did exactly what they were supposed to do.
So, there must be a lot of people in Aransas Pass getting evicted, because it's showing up everywhere.
Cory?
As an excuse.
His question is, if it's okay, if you write citations to the people that are not paying attention, cutting the grass and cleaning up the debris, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
He's not paying attention either.
Sounded like a lawyer, Mayor.
Holy moly.
I'm so sorry.
That was real fancy, Mayor, come back.
You want our permission that you can hand out violations and tickets to people without your...
Bro, I want to make sure you guys are fine with that, me going it that way, I mean, not only do I, I sent a certified letter before, I give them X amount of days, on top, other notice that's been placed, you know, newspaper, when I'm out and about, I, you know, I'm telling people, it needs to get cleaned up, so, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to give them ample time, I'm trying to work with them, they're just ignoring it, I just want to make sure you guys are fine with me going ahead and forwarding with the citations.
With this poor thing, I call you twenty-four hours a day. Poor thing's like, God, that's crazy.
I got a new number, by the way.
Well, block this call.
Yeah, he just said, I got a new number, and you're not getting it.
We would just, we just want to send a violation to eighty-year-old lady that don't have nobody, and they, she can't move her...
I've done that before, but I've worked with her, I, I actually got a whole sit, and they, they came out to assist her, but I don't know.
Was that problems, have you got city staff?
Even though they're eighty years old, they still need to get the information, this is not okay, she's bound to have sister, brother, friend, somebody that can help her out, and still, regardless of age, race, or color, they're in violation of city.
One of the things that, in the past, and I don't know if you still have it, in the past, you had a list of mowers, of people that would mow for eighty-year-old individuals, and they would go mow their property, you would give them the list, this is, I, these are the ten names, you want them to call, if you don't have anyone that can, that can mow their property for you, call one of these, because I know Rudy at one time was on that list, and he would go, and he would mow a property, and he would charge ten dollars.
That, that is part of my notice that I mail out.
You know, so I don't know if you still have that list, and, and people are using that list, you know, and, and that's what I mean, just to help the eighty-year-old ladies or something like that, before you, like, ram is concerned, which I can understand on those people that are handicapped, that don't have the, uh, someone to do that, but have that list, and, and it's like, we're not promoting anyone, you call whichever one you want to call, on that kind of thing, is that okay, or is that any kind of problem?
No, I think that's a wonderful idea, and, and I've seen that work very well in other municipalities, in fact, I'd even venture to say there's another avenue to be added to that, when those citations are issued, they come to court, to municipal court, and they'll eventually see me, uh, or the judge, right, if they see me, I ask them, kind of like a meet and greet, that it's in court now, why haven't you mowed this property? And oftentimes, one of the most reasonable excuses I get is, I don't have the equipment to do it. And so, uh, I know, I was just reading, another major municipality in Texas recently just started, uh, um, an equipment service list, in other words, you could come and take the In other words, you could come and take the equipment for a day to do what you needed to do and bring it back. That's pretty extensive, you know, that's pretty rich for a city to do. But that's oftentimes the excuse I get. Well, I don't have the equipment to do it.
Well, we probably have church rooms, boys scout.
Right, exactly.
There are people around that need to fix it.
Just make sure they fit, they be fit. As long as they qualify, okay? To make sure that they are those ones that really need the help. Not the ones that can really help themselves and they're just crying out of a story I can't do.
They're too lazy to get out there and do it themselves.
What about, what about the lots that have stuff put on them? Garbage, 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 garbage on a vacant lot?
That, that stuff will not get picked up.
I understand that. And those piles continue to get bigger and bigger?
Yes.
To, uh, come indoors and renew the entire city, the council over in New York. They went around to give us a contest.
But isn't there some way to go after that lot owner? And I've heard this from other cities, that you can send the certified letter to Burl and say, Burl, I'm sorry, you know, your property at so-and-so and so-and-so in Texas, you know, needs to be picked up. We're going to charge 50 bucks to pick it up or, you know.
Yes, what you're talking about is a weed lien. And so it's that mowing and cleaning option that I was talking about with the demolitions. Lots of cities do have a mowing and cleaning program where if they do not mow their yard within the 10 days that they're allowed it, they issue a citation. And in addition to that, it's referred to the mowing group.
Yeah, but these are, these are piles of garbage on abandoned lot, well, not abandoned lots. The resident doesn't live here.
It's debris.
Or that doesn't even live in the state of Texas.
Right. And so if they're, if they're not going to, they're still not entitled to the notice under the statute. If they don't remove it within the timeframe, the city can move forward to remove it and lien the land.
We need to do that.
And we can foreclose on a weed lien. You can foreclose property on a weed lien. And what some cities do is they look at where all the weed liens are and foreclose. And they land bank the area and then sell the area to the developer to reuse it.
But you see what happens? In the past, what we've done, we've released all those liens.
Yeah, for a $10, yeah, you're right.
And, you know, if we're going to do that, I don't like the fact for us to go ahead and, well, we're going to waive bond fees because you're going to pay $200 for that property, but you don't want to pay for all the liens. And we say, yeah, go ahead. Let's remove all the liens.
That's right.
And buy the property, even those on the corner lot, a really nice lot, we'll give it to you for 200. That right there just irritates me. Because our staff is spending their time mowing and cleaning. And we're putting a lien on that property. So when they come to the, to the city hall, just to us, city council, and they want, somebody bids on that property, but they want us to forgive any liens that they have. That to me, I don't like. Because of the fact that our city staff, we paid them. And it's a cost for us to, for some, for someone to come. And you look at those properties, they're not even kept up. The ones that bought that for $200, they haven't kept it up. And they're turning around and selling that property for $10,000 or $15,000. That to me is something that we as a council need to really consider if we're going to go this route, you know? Because our staff is paying, or we're paying that. And it, I mean, we're shooting ourselves on the foot. We're giving that, put it on the tax, well, yes. But they turn right around, they don't build anything on there. They're still paying the same amount of taxes. They're not going to build anything on it. Because they're going to turn around, especially now with all this new industry coming in. People are going to try buying all these, you know, lots that we have here. And they're going to pay pennies. And we're going to give everything back to them, they don't have to pay the liens. That's something that we really, as a council, need to look at that. I'm afraid, I don't, I don't want to get on my soapbox. But I, every time that comes on, I get so upset in the past. Because it's, well, Vicki, we have to put it on the tax roll. They're going to have to start paying taxes. All they're going to pay is $15. What tax roll is that? Because they're not going to build a home. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm off my soapbox.
But she's right. She is 100% correct.
You are.
It would be a good idea if we create our in-house grass disposal system. If we're that good, that smart to be able to run it to where we can send our own equipment out there to clean up the stuff.
We're not there yet.
That's just my idea.
Yeah, well, we're not there yet.
That's not my idea.
Let's make them down the road.
So if we go, if we put liens on those, we just need to make sure as a council that we don't do that. And just being, you know, we have to be very smart. You have given, giving our town away. I'm sorry. I'll get off my soapbox.
This is a question, it's a very valid point. It is extremely valid. That's why when, I think your tax law firm, was it Linebarger? When they come to tell you these are being, you can reject it. You can say, well, how many liens or what are the value of the liens? And you can reject the offer. Those are difficult decisions for you all to make. But you're entitled to know that information. What I have seen cities do in that particular instance is that they will agree to release it under some kind of economic development agreement. We'll sell it to you for this value. But you have to develop it within a certain timeframe.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Or you have to maintain it clean. Because most of these properties that we, that have been bought at auctions, all they, all they have, they just bought it, they have yet to even clean it, mowed. And I've been told of vacant property that don't have to, if it's never been mowed, it never has to be mowed. I mean, it's.
But I think that would be one of the things written to where, if you buy this property on the tax roll, you need to keep it up.
Yeah, whatever we need to do.
I like the fact that you develop it.
We've dealt with this before. If they have to do, this was referred to a few minutes ago. That it's going to be built on and new structures going to be built on that. If these properties have been certain period of time or it goes back to the city. However, it doesn't need to be more than that. But there has to be a system for, and a time limit for that to happen or it goes back to the city.
I like that.
There's another, something called a land banking program. And it is exactly what it sounds like. Smart cities will not sell it. They will bank it. And literally call it a banking program. They bank the land. And they do, they do it smartly. Where they'll take, they'll bank all the land that's available to them in a particular area and they connect the dots. So that it's a region, as opposed to just a lot. And the region gets sent off to an economic development director who finds the developer to build the area. West Dallas was built like that.
Nice.
So here, um, I think the question that I had with contractors that trim trees and all that, do, do we have something in place where they go dump their limbs that they trim?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are they, are they taking that to their landfill? Or is that allowed there?
They're not allowed.
So that's why. So where are they disposing of those cuttings?
They could be illegally dumping it on the vacant lots. Some could be hauling it back, maybe a county dump. I really don't know.
Because I know there's a, they've created a dump site on, between DeBerry, I know, between Highland and McCampbell. There is a huge pile of things there. And they're all limbs. So is there something that we can implement that if you hire a contractor to trim your trees and do that, that they have to get a permit from the city? So that way we know, they can tell us where they're dumping? I don't know, just something, because I feel like I've even have, in the past, have followed these people that have these, this trailer's full of limbs of trees. And I know our landfill is that way and they're hidden that way.
There's a fine line, and I want to, the chief can help me with this. There's a fine line between evictions and, you know, throwing the evictors, victims' stuff out on it and somebody illegally dumping. And you're only going to really be able to know that by looking through the trash. So I don't want anyone to get confused. And chief, do you agree with that?
It was a fine, yeah. But with these limitations, I did talk to the judge about it as well.
Which judge?
Uh, the judge that ordered the eviction. JP and everything that Roxanne was saying is basically what she's telling us. But that's not the only one in the bank. You saw the other one in Cia, Cia Moss. That was another one. And they were camping out, living on the side of the shore.
I saw that.
Property. And then they started getting banned, like the homeless lady in the wheelchair that's got an heroin problem. Started getting banned from everywhere. And then we ended up finally getting them convinced to move to shelter. Cory and staff transported to shelter. That was another eviction. And then we worked, and Joey also told us about another one that's going to be coming up. Um, I found out that one's a no part.
So what can we do about contractors?
Well, when you talk about high weeds, you're talking about debris on property as well. I mean, you know, you can do the same thing. You can, you can do a weed lien, which is a debris lien. It's the same thing. You may want to consider actually doing a RFP for a third-party contractor that does mowing and cleaning services like this. And have a portion of the budget dedicated to it. That way, these repeat offenders that you have, you have somewhere to instruct a third-party to go clean it up and lien it. We can set that program up for you and we can lien, I can set up the lien program for you. But if, the bottom line is that if the property owner or the person responsible for the property isn't removing the debris, the only people left are you. And the only way for you to recoup is to lien. So either, some cities do it in-house.
Give them notice.
Or some cities do a third-party vendor. And are selective about the properties they send that third-party vendor to.
So that, what about people dumping, like contractors dumping their debris on vacant property?
So.
You better catch them and the action be quick.
And the chief can help me with this.
Give them a notice. And then if they don't do it, then you sign them and then you do whatever you got to do if we're going to move forward with it.
Well, I think we're going to need to clarify too, maybe with our trash company. Because we have found some areas where there is construction debris out. And according to talking to Absolute Bill, they won't take construction debris. Now, if I'm doing construction work at my house in Portland and I put construction debris out on the side of the road, my bulk collection will pick that up if I put it out. The issue is, is when a contractor comes in to do tree service, stuff like that, they have to provide that haul off. The contractor can't put it on the homeowner and can't put it on city service. But I think that our trash collection should allow homeowners to do their own remodeling, put out their own debris and still have to take that debris up. That is something that we're kind of accustomed to.
100%. So we don't have a bulk trash pickup with our own trash service? Okay, we do, but they don't consider construction debris as bulk trash?
Contractors have very specific, uh, working as to what they're going to not pick up. And they are not taking up construction.
And that's what Bill Williams told me directly.
Yes, and our problem with that is, we have talked to some landlords about that. And if you're going to do a $20,000 remodel on your home, you're hiring a contractor to do that, then in the permitting process, make sure that the contractor has a roll-off of the container on site. Take care of that. Because what's happening is the contractors are, the tech, the owners, property owners come in here and pick up the one, one month ticket for, for the transfer station. And the contractor goes out there and uses that. And then the contractor goes out there and pays the $25 fee or whatever the fee is to continue going. So what we're implementing a change here at city hall is you're going to get your one month free as you normally get. But if we're no longer, we're going to be taking money at the transfer station. You want to pay for additional tickets? You have to be a utility customer from within the city. And those are the only people that will be giving you a ticket to be able to go into the transfer station. Because you are facing this problem. When they go and dump the brush, when they go and dump the, the construction material there, and those are contractors that are already making money on that business. They just don't want to have the expense of the roll-off of the container. But this needs to be something that the building department has to work, to handle. We need to make sure that if they get an X dollar, put an X dollar amount to the remodel, anything above that dollar threshold will require us, require us for them to have the roll-off container before permitting.
Great point, Senator. So Burl, do we have that right now?
No, we don't.
Okay, we'll take a look at bringing that as an ordinance change.
So can residents take their own personal limbs and things to the transfer station? I was told no.
I thought that they didn't take, they don't take it. They don't take any brush.
The brush is the bulk pickup that we do on the month. Put out your bulk container on your area, whatever you're zoning.
We're not taking it in the, in the transfer station.
Well, no wonder there's so much trash.
I know. And then you have to go there because most of the time, on Saturday morning, if you get there at 11 o'clock or 10:30, it's already full. We don't have enough.
Right.
And we're getting filled up rapidly quickly because we hide it in the stack that is all these contractors that are just going in and dumping their stuff instead of getting the roll-off container. And then why are our containers over there at the transfer station are getting filled up rapidly? So we're going to implement the fact that we're no longer going to take them anywhere at the rapid transfer station.
So we're going to get more trash in the neighborhoods soon?
Yes, we will.
So they're just going to dump it. They're going to find a back road. Over near the harbor where all those dirt roads go and they're going to, they're going to dump it. Bottom line.
We'll take a look. I'll work with the billing official under your instruction to figure out if we can amend the ordinance to require that a certain value of reconstruction will mandate a roll-off on the property. You think that's doable, billing official? Eminem, you're the one that sees them. What do you think?
Go through it again.
Oh, having a roll-off in container required at the premises, was there a certification at X dollar value in a lot?
I think that, I think that'll take care of some of that that I'm talking about.
Have you had talked about that with some of the?
As far as other illegal dump sites, that is something, in fact, Cory just, two weeks ago, when we find a dump site or he finds a dump site, we actually sift through that trash pile and see if there's any evidence to follow.
Jay.
And he does, Cory does do that. I don't know if we add success with that. But we have found identifying documents and stuff like that before and it gives us a way to go.
So any plans for what's out there right now? Is it going to stay there?
You mean, once again, the vacant properties?
Yeah.
The only way that I can see that we're going to be able to do it at this point, what's out there right now, we can't afford a million dollars.
I will go, yes, no.
We look into that option.
You can.
I'll give you a bid for a lot less than that.
We're going to have to figure out how the city, in my opinion, argue with me, how the city is going to have to take that responsibility on over a period of time. Now, as you pointed out to me, we don't have the staff to do that and that is actually. It's just back to the next topic we'll be talking about is the budget. But it will be an expensive process for us to do. And I think that's what it's going to come down to. Because the city having to take on that responsibility. Argue with me, tell me where I'm wrong on that.
While it's expensive, I'll argue with you because that's what I'm meant to do. My husband's so glad I do it away from him. I'll argue with you in that the expense is the initial upfront. The long-term expense is the loss of the revenue from the property values or any development because of the trash. So it's like, where are you going to put your cost first? Where are you going to absorb your cost? At the front end or at the back end? And, and it still requires money either which way.
You don't have the money.
It still requires money.
We need to take a lottery ticket for the city every week.
But one of the things is, if we spend a million dollars, we clean it up. It's going to happen again if we do not have the right procedures in place. It's always going to happen. I know that in the past, the chamber has come and they've, you know, had dumpsters, you know, and, I know, let's have a cleanup day, let's, everybody bring their stuff over there, you know? But it doesn't, it doesn't stop people from still taking all over the place. I don't know how we can, I don't know what we can do. That's because we clean up one area, you turn around the next week and it's piled up again.
You do it smartly. And what I mean by that is you are strategic about where you spend that dollar. For example, and I'm brainstorming here with you because this is a workshop. We know the seven structures that we're focusing on that are draining the city's resources for dilapidated structures, right? It may be that we focus our efforts around that area. Around what's it, around that area so we can get that producing property back on and clean up the rest of it within a certain radius. Or it may be that you pick downtown. As within these downtown districts, we're going to not tolerate trash anywhere. And the city will focus on the collection of trash and the leaning of trash within that district only. In other words, you can't claim the whole town, but you can be strategic about what you're doing it smartly and have your starters lineup.
We're agreeing with that. In other words, if we were to do the same things we're doing with the demolition and just pick out of the worst areas and just go there for that, that's as much as we can do. I'm not even sure we can do that financially, but that is worth looking at.
Or.
Take that approach. What's the alternative? The alternative is to do nothing. That's not really responsible.
Are you strategically?
We're going to have to work on changing attitudes. And you're going to start, and that's going to think education is going to start, you know, starting off with the Chiquitos. You got to start them young. you know, starting off with the Chiquitos. You gotta start them young, because, you know, people have been throwing, you know, trash in place after decades. Yes, sir, you're not gonna change them. But, you know, it's a long-term project. You gotta start with the young, and, you know, we might have to, and who knows? Might have to shame people into doing the right thing, too. I don't know what's gonna happen, but definitely you gotta change your attitude.
You can get their pocketbook.
I thought about, after a certain amount of cost, whenever you pull a permit, you gotta have a dumpster.
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, that's, that sounds like a good idea.
You could also strategically focus where you know the economic development is coming, or where there's expressive interest. So, even, what you have to do is generate the economic development interest to bring in the income so that you can afford to clean up the entire city. Does that, it's a complicated process, but it's strategic. It just takes time and effort by all of the entities together in the city to make it work.
So, we have told you where, what is gonna be done. We got your input on demolition. So, I'm hearing from you that as far as the debris on the lots, looking at that point, we need to come back to you with a plan on how we're going to tackle that and what we're gonna be happy to do, and that makes a lot of sense. That's a starting point anyway for us. Are your questions answered, Cory?
I think we just finally added your name.
One last thing.
What's your new telephone number? Don't give it to her.
I'm gonna ask you now. The property that I talked to you about, which they mowed, was at the corner of Arch and Spencer. They mowed that, but the city easement is thirty foot tall. They're, they're, every time, you know, it takes six months to a year to get those people that you've called on to get it mowed. They've mowed it, but what's on the street, you still can't see the house.
You can't see it up in the alley either. I know it's that.
Yeah, so it's that city, and I know that property owner's going, well, it's that city, I don't have to do it.
I believe that kind of falls into what you were asking about with the city, yeah, maybe city right away, like the alley and stuff like that. But it's still the homeowner's responsibility or that.
Well, when I'm talking to the alleys bad, but the, but the street, the Spencer, right, it's that time.
Education's on, on that property, and, you know, I have to go all the way up to the street if I don't stop past the sidewalk, you know, even though the city has that right away.
So, I don't know if you can still go, thanks for mowing the twenty, the ten feet around your house, but you can go a little farther this time.
Absolutely.
I'll definitely go by and educate them.
Sure you can, but you've got to start baby steps. Baby steps.
That'll be the next one.
Baby steps.
Gary, Gary, this is for the next time, okay? Whenever they mow the grass, they spreading the grass all over the street is not good. It's gonna end up in order.
Plus it goes into, that's right.
We need to come up with something to where if you know they mow the street, they either need to like mulch it, put it back in the grass, or just don't put it out in the street.
Just aim the mower the other way.
Correct.
Well, there is an ordinance against them.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't listen. Educate you, yeah.
Trust me, they're not.
I've already taken pictures. I won't send them to you, but.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Another thing is that I, sorry, sorry. Sorry. Is to make sure the city properties are taken care of.
Oh, yeah.
Because I can tell you that, my husband tells me, how can the city expect people to mow if the city's properties are not taken care of?
Absolutely.
So, we need to make sure that any property the city owns is mowed.
Yes, ma'am. We have a list of all the city-owned property, and I briefly discussed that with Sid, discussed with crew leaders as well, but.
Need to keep in mind, they are out there mowing, and we are limited as far as how fast they can, we don't have.
You can start here.
Other cities do a large group of guys mowing, who are going as fast as we can. And I, what I've seen is, the money, the money.
Here is, here's another option. And it, everything involves money. But large cities have really big problems with this as well. You can't have one vendor that mows the entire city because they have, it'll take them too long, and they'll just keep rotating. So, sometimes what you can do is you can divide up the city into sections and have maybe one vendor for one area and the city for the other area, you know, so that it's, it's happening at the.
I think we've already tried that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was crucified for that.
Thanks, Cory. Whoever used to have questions?
No, that's the same question, no.
Oh, no.
And need to have an explanation, and Lady Mary, we knew you were very professional.
Well, the next two items, the next two items relate to the reconsideration of the property tax rate. The rules state that one member can request that the item be brought back for reconsideration, and these are the two items that are before you. The reconsideration itself requires that someone who voted on the prevailing side make the motion, and since all of you voted for it, it could be any one of you. It has to be second, and then it would require a majority vote. What this does, it allows for these items to be placed back on the table for discussion. So, therefore, action on these two items needs to occur before you can discuss the tax rate. So, these are the two items before you now, okay? And then what I've placed at your desk, I placed two motions. After the discussions, if you decide to stay with the same proposed tax rate of the seventy-three cents, there's two motions that need to be made. Or should you decide to increase it, I've given you two motions for that as well. So, but right now, we're going to act on the, on the reconsideration. There's two motions there.
So, is there anyone willing to make a motion to reconsider number, agenda item three-one?
I make a motion that reconsider agenda item three-one, the reconsideration of motion set in September seventeenth as a date for adoption of the, is that what I'm doing?
Yes.
Reconsideration.
Uh-huh.
At floor tax rate of zero point seven-three-five-one-nine-six for a hundred dollar valuation.
I'll second.
For the favor?
Aye.
Now, you do the second one as well, three point two.
Oh, so we have to do that, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I make a motion that we, the reconsideration of, of motion set in a public hearing on the at the floor tax rate for September the fourth, two thousand eighteen, during the regular city council meeting beginning at six, at City Hall, six hundred West Cleveland, Orange Pass, Texas.
I'll second.
For the favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Much attention, uh, once that is known. We will announce that in a few weeks. Uh, we have applications for hazard mitigation grants, including converting City Hall to an expanded public safety building, and building the city's first emergency operations center. Uh, we have over a half million dollar grant to help move City Hall downtown, uh, which will, um, um, provide an economic boost to the much-needed downtown area. It's not a matter of applying for that grant, it has been received. Uh, the renovation of Pacific Center, as I indicated, has started. A long unresolved environmental work at Con Brown being addressed right now. I think we may have heard that one of the three is now resolved.
Good.
Oh, thank God. I believe that's the case, I gotta look at that letter a little more closely. Uh, and I'm getting, uh, Jack Woods input on that also from Helen. Um, and, um, uh, capital improvement items are scheduled for this budget, a whole list of them, but it's coming from existing bond money. We can't afford, uh, to go into the budget for capital improvement items in this particular budget, we'll cover that in a second. We're in discussion with a major entertainment, uh, facility that has already purchased, uh, the property. They want to move here, but we have to work out some issues with them. That gets back to the budget also. Unless we have a strong budget, it'll be difficult to do. We'll figure out a way, uh, but, uh, come back to the budget. Uh, we're in negotiation with a housing developer. This is as of this, uh, this week, uh, that has already purchased land, uh, or I'm sorry, has built a successful apartment complex in the region, uh, up in the Gregory area. He wants to come here. He's talking with us about ways to make that happen, he gets back to the budget. Uh, the first city, uh, conferencing plan ever is underway right now. A new webpage, we were gonna talk about webpage tonight, we're not going to, uh, wanna wait for some more development, but that is underway, it's moving along very nicely right now. Downtown development, as I talked about already. Community cleanup, so important in the whole process, an important part of economic development also. And, and we have said several times, uh, it impacts the budget directly, and it's hard to move with many things, uh, because of the budgetary requirements. It's important to realize recovery is a multi-year marathon, it's not a one-year sprint. And the Facebook, it's a one-year sprint. It ain't, it's a, it's a multi-year marathon. Whatever emergency you're dealing with of this size, it takes several years to, uh, to complete it. And we are, uh, we're moving along well, uh, but, uh, it does take a while to do that. One of the major challenges to help us accomplish some of the economic development goals is to strengthen our budget. Uh, we've started a new budget process, that's also one of the things that has occurred. It appears this year, we're headed in the right direction. This budget, uh, since we last met with you, is, uh, uh, we believe will be even a little bit stronger. Uh, but we're not there yet. Budget needs, uh, our general fund balance should be at forty percent. That's what, uh, uh, we've indicated at the last, uh, budget meeting. We are now over twenty-five percent. That's generally a minimum for a city, a minimum for a city. We're a little above that, uh, we have to improve on that. Uh, better than recent years, and going in the right direction, but still significantly, uh, significantly below where we should be. We need a citywide, uh, citywide renovation of water and sewer lines, but that's gonna take a bond issue, city bond. Uh, we can't have bond issues without good credit ratings, hence, strong budget. And we're gonna, they're gonna be looking at us very soon on that issue right there. Daily operational needs such as the recent water break, uh, there are no funds available to cover such emergencies. We have to take it from some other areas. The budget is so tight, you don't have funds to cover that recent water break, uh, without taking it from other areas. All the things we've been talking about tonight are very important, but we can take it from other areas to pay for it. That's how tight our budget is. Um, and, uh, just this week, people have come to my office saying they want to develop here, as I said earlier, but, um, what can we do for them in the way of incentives? Uh, and, uh, we can't give ins- get incentives without a strong budget. Uh, long unresolved environmental issues are being resolved, that must be paid for by the budget. That's coming directly from the budget. Uh, and Con Brown and LWR cannot be developed until these environmental issues are resolved. It can't be. Uh, you know the story, the GLO and all of that. Uh, but, we're on the way to getting those resolved, but it's coming from the budget. Property tax options. Uh, staff, and wanna get into some numbers here, and, uh, Sandy will take over as far as the more in-depth and more enlightened, uh, explanation that I can give you. Uh, staff initially suggested that we stay with the effective rate of seventy-three. This is not a tax increase, folks, it is not a tax increase. It's the effective rate, which means that's the rate we need to maintain in order to simply stay where we are right now. On average, taxpayers are not seeing a tax increase, uh, with a, um, with a seventy percent rate, a seventy-three percent rate if you stay there. The damage to the properties throughout the city is the result of Harvey, and the lower valuation of the damaged properties is why the effective rate went from sixty-eight to seventy-three. Uh, there have been questions about, uh, what it would mean to go above the effective rate, and that's what we're gonna go into some detail with you on. The, uh, right now, on the seventy-three, uh, that, uh, you had earlier approved, the increase for the average, uh, the increase on a hundred thousand dollar home is, um, uh, forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents for a hundred thousand dollar home, two hundred thousand dollar home, double that. And if you go up to seventy-four cents, I'm rounding, uh, the, um, increase for a hundred thousand dollar home, fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Going all the way up, instead of just going down that list, going all the way up to seventy-nine, for example, seventy-nine oh one nine six, that would be a hundred and one dollar increase for a, uh, year, we're talking every year, uh, for a hundred thousand dollar home. So for a two hundred thousand dollar home per year, that would be a two hundred dollar increase per year. That's up to seventy-nine. Uh, so we're starting with seventy-three, which is forty-six, double that for a two hundred thousand dollar home, uh, and then going to seventy-four, you have fifty-one, fifty-four, uh, and it increases generally after that in five dollar increments. So, uh, that's a quick overview, if you wanna talk about, uh, going from that seventy-three. Now, let me point out, and, uh, leave Sandy's help, uh, pretty soon here. Uh, but, uh, as you've heard me say ad nauseam, uh, S and P looked at this very closely. And our financial advisor, when we started talking about the property tax, uh, he reminded us, uh, that, uh, please, if at all possible, uh, at least do the seventy-three, so you stay where you are, at least stay, do that. Uh, but S and P is gonna be looking at if we wanna make the budget even stronger. But they're trying to protect their bond, that's what they're trying to do.
Sure.
And, uh, uh, so that's what they're looking at very closely, and we wanna do all we can to avoid a downgrade. Not that one definitely will happen, 'cause we were able to keep, because of Sandy's good work, because of all the people involved with it, we were able to avoid that downgrade last time. A lot of it because she knew, I knew, maybe that's, maybe that's the only reason. Uh, but still, yeah, we put a lot of work in that, we did not get downgraded, so maybe we won't. There's a danger we will unless we show how much we're able, we want to put into this budget as far as the revenue side goes, and cutting back on the expenditures. And we have cut back so much on the expenditures already, uh, in the budget meetings that we've had. Uh, the, uh, department has been great. Uh, but, um, uh, we have to look at that revenue side. So Sandy, look in your hand, what you have to say so far.
Well, basically, you put this reference in, um, if you all, I, I left a little handout there with you guys. And it's just basically, the left-hand column is on a half a cent increment on how that's gonna reflect, and how much revenue. The additional tax levy, which is one, the column number four, that's how much more money we would be collecting as compared to last year. And everything that Mr. Edwards said, especially our bond rating, is of the utmost importance to us. Um, the water leak is a perfect example of, uh, things that could happen that are not budgeted for. That's, that water leak alone, and just the repair side, not the water that we lost, that we're gonna be financially responsible for, but just the repairs, it's, we're looking at about forty to fifty thousand dollars. Just the labor of repairing, hiring somebody to come in and fix that. Plus the water loss that we had, because that leak occurred on August the tenth, and it continued, 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 until it was finally repaired some ten days later, I believe. So, we're gonna, we're gonna be paying for that. We, I've already contacted Sandpat, the municipal water, and they said, "No, I..." He told you? Yes, and they said, "No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be willing, they wouldn't be able to give us a break on the bill." And they explained, and they had very valid reasons for that, and, but it didn't hurt to ask. You know, I, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't even try to see if we could get a discount on that. But, um, but this is something that, you know, we were, we were, wanna stay at, at the minimum at the seventy-three, but if, at this point, you all are considering doing something more than that, these are the options, all the way to the rollback rate of eighty cents. And, um, these are the options presented before you. Uh, we do need, however, a decision made tonight. Today is the final day. We have a calendar date that we need to adhere to, to be able to have the, our tax bills sent out on October first. And this, uh, having this meeting today and, and coming out with a decision, whether it is to stay at what we had already approved at the seventy-three or go higher. If we're gonna go higher, we're gonna need to have two public hearings, and then the adoption of the, of the tax rate, uh, three days after that. So there are some calendar days that we need to be aware of. So today is the day that we're here to discuss, and we need to kind of make a decision. If you decide to go higher and you say, "You know what, we're gonna go with seventy-five cents", we, we move along the process and you have the public hearings, and we do the advertisement, we have the public hearings. The date of the adoption, I believe, is September the twenty-fourth. If at that time, you change your mind and say, "You know what, we're, we, we really should just do the seventy-three that we initially said", you can adopt the seventy-three, you know? Uh, but we do need to have a proposed tax rate at this time, and this would be the last date for us to be able to, to get that out there.
Do we know what the, um, AP ISD raised their rate to? 'Cause I heard they were increasing...
They did raise the rate, I, it was, and we talked about it, I, and the newspaper, it came out. It was substantial, it was more than, um, it was more than a couple of cents.
So people would be slammed in both directions?
Yeah, it was, it was substantial. I, I wanna say thirty cents, but I, I don't quote you on that. Yeah, yeah, uh, but it was a big, a big hike. And we were, we were looking at that a couple of weeks ago.
Now, one of the things also is, I know that the school districts have the one-year option, I think I asked, where you could raise, just for one year, just to recover from Harvey. Was it that particular?
I don't know if that's what they were doing at the ISD or not here. I know that Corpus ISD chose to, chose to do that, and I know that they went with that option. I don't know, I don't think that this is what they were, I, I don't know if this is what they were doing here in AP. The article that I read, uh, glanced at, was just what their effective rate and what their proposed rate was gonna be, was higher than their effective rate, but I believe it was be, be less than the rollback rate. So, but it was significantly higher. I don't, there was an article in the paper.
So you know they took advantage of that or not?
I don't believe, the only ISD that I know of that took advantage of that is Corpus. 'Cause I spoke with the county appraisal district, uh, of Nwessis County, and they said that Corpus was taking advantage of that. And I don't know who else. But, well, as this is city, we don't have that option.
I know, yeah, I, I do that.
'Cause I asked about that also, 'cause you were the one that triggered me calling. Yes, yes, I did, I wasn't aware of that, but I did, I did make those calls.
You know, I think everyone would like something for free, but unfortunately, all of the improvements, city improvements and, and, um, city fluff stuff that everybody wants to have here, we just can't, the city just cannot afford to do it without some type of tax increase.
Correct. We're talking...
We just can't.
We're talking about cleaning up the city, that's gonna cost, that is gonna cost us money. Uh, all of that...
And the, um, promotional ideas that we can bring to develop, developers that wanna come in, you know, help them. Our city will never get to the places that we want it to unless we do a tax increase. It will remain exactly the way it is.
And a lot of projects that we need, like for instance, the, uh, our infrastructure.
Yeah. Without the paint and stuff, we just need the infrastructure that we cannot afford without a tax increase.
That's the problem. It's that we can't afford another water break.
Right.
Basically. We're just, we're living day-to-day. Money goes in, money goes out. We don't have that, say, reserve for that emergency
The cushion.
that says, "Okay, this happened, you know, we have this extra money that we can pull from without having to cut services from another department", because we already used that money for this, for this emergency. And that's the problem, that's, you know...
You know how hard this is, right?
I know, I know, trust me, I was very surprised.
I sat in the budget hearings with you guys, the department heads, and I just know how really tight it is.
I was sitting down when I was told, 'cause I would've, you know...
But it's, you know, we've, we've just, as a city, for the longest time, as long as I've been in, in council, we've just put ma- Band-Aids. And then that Band-Aid, you know, we have to replace the Band-Aid again. We've not had a, uh, what is it, a plan to, okay, we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna do that, because we're just taking care. And I, as much, I hate, I hate the fact of, but, I, I've heard a lot of times that you have to, and, and I'm not saying this, I mean, when you, sometimes you have, I'm talking as a homeowner, sometimes you have to spend money on your, on your property, you have to spend money in order to, when you go around to sell it, you're going to recover. And, and, and kinda looking at, at, looking at it as a city, you know, how can we attract these developers to come? If, or even residents to come and buy these homes, they come in and they see the trash. They come in and see our streets, they come in and see the mowing. They, you know, all of that, so we, and they see the downtown, we've got to do things to...
We're at a, we're at a crossroads. I really believe that right now, we've been moving forward slowly, but right now, we're at a crossroads. And we can go the way of developing big, and two years from now, somebody that was here today is gonna come back two, three years from now, and it's not gonna be the same town. It's gonna be totally different, because we're gonna be developed. We're gonna have a better harbor, we're gonna have development, uh, out there, we're gonna have more commerce here in our area. Or we can take the other road and just stay stagnant, and stay the same, and not grow as a city. And it's hard to make those decisions, you have to sell this to the constituents. We do what you want, and I know that you're gonna hear from your constituents. I can tell you that I spoke with Mr. Edwards when this was initially brought up, and he said, "Our budget for, this is not gonna go to salaries, this is not gonna go to any of that. Our salary, our budget for that has already been set. This is gonna go for the cleanup, for, you know, having a money set aside to be able to repair another water line that's gonna break, because it will happen. It's only a matter of when is it going to happen."
In another single...
I think we need to educate the community on why this is so necessary. They've gotta have, they've gotta have exactly in front of them what we've done, just what you did there, what, what you've done, and what it, what it, our future is, you know?
I think the economic growth around us is, is snowballing in our favor. And if we don't step on, into that snowball, we're just gonna be left out here on the side.
You're right on point.
Do, it just, and that...
Looking back.
It's not gonna look good if, if we just sit back on the side and do nothing.
And then we're gonna look back.
We have to continue this huge economic growth that is going on all around us. And it's, it's here, it's coming more, it's coming fast.
We have a one-time chance.
Yes.
I agree, a one-time chance, this is it.
Yes, ma'am. Is that on the right? Okay, but what was it proposed? What was it proposed? Um, we didn't, we didn't find the article? Okay. Yeah. Mayor, you've been very quiet.
I know, I know, I know how you feel.
But we've gotta do it.
Can we, can we propose a tax increase for a year, like Vicki was saying? For the next year, and then at the end of the next year, we can keep it at that, lower it?
Every year, you have the opportunity to increase or decrease the property tax rate. That is, we come every year before you, and you do the tax rate every year. So you can say, "We're gonna do this, this year", and then see what the property values are next year. See how many new homes came on, see where we're at with that.
And that's gonna be the difference, you know?
And see what you wanna do at that time.
If we get the new developments up and stuff.
What has been the development and the growth?
Exactly, and what that brings in.
Every year, you have, we, we do this, and every year, you have that opportunity to say, "This is where we wanna be at." Unfortunately, you know, some other surrounding communities may not be having a tax rate increase, or may not be doing what we're doing, but it's because we're not in the same financial situation as they are, and we weren't as lucky as they are. And, no, no, that's, that was it.
Much higher.
Than what we have.
Yes.
And hopefully, the, the new properties coming online are gonna be much better homes, more, that with a greater value. Some of these properties, I would like to buy a house. I go on there to see what's out there, a hundred and ninety, two hundred thousand dollar homes are being, that's what's going out there. That's what's, that, yeah, that's what's, that's what's on the market, that's what's, that's what's out there, so...
And it's kind of, when you look at One Avenue Way, I mean, they haven't even built the homes, and they've already sold them.
That's right, they're on phase two already.
Yeah, and it's, this is, this is happening, it is. And like I said, you, you do this this year, obviously, as your finance director, next year, I'm gonna tell you, "Don't lower the taxes", 'cause I'm always gonna say, "Don't", but, you know, you have to do what's right for the community at that point in time.
So tonight, what do, what, what do we need to do tonight?
Tonight, you need to propose, if you wanna propose...
Tax rate, higher than the...
Yes.
Or stay at that?
But, but do we have to pick a particular number here?
You have to pick a number, yes.
We have to particular, particular number.
I, I'm thinking at point seven-nine.
Seven-nine? I was going for seven-seven, it was kind of in the middle, but, um...
I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, I mean...
Seven-seven is five cents.
But we don't have, but we don't have to go with that.
Seven-three-four, that's less.
It's an eighty-one dollar...
Just to be clear, at final adoption, and Sandra has said this, but I wanna reiterate it, at final adoption, you can go lower than tonight's rate, but you can't go higher. So, you gotta do the maximum you're willing to ever do today for this year.
Oh, so tonight, okay, so I hear what you're saying. So we can do seven, if you say seven-nine, we can go lower at final time.
Yes, correct.
Well, let's go point eight-zero.
Let's go for broke.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, guys.
I'm always gonna say yes.
And we have two public hearings.
You do have two public hearings coming up.
But we have to get people in here to, to understand the whole thing, and that's the whole thing. I, I just don't understand why people aren't here to un...
Well, maybe because they're at the school board, that, we didn't realize that there was a school board meeting.
They don't attend the school board.
No, I just assumed that they were there. I just do, even if they were, we have to be at the school board meeting.
They are, yeah.
I know that you advertised it, and I know it was on our Facebook, so...
And I've tried to tell everybody, we put it out to all the Pelican Cove people, we put it out to all the Har- Bay Harbor people, and they understood why we had to do this. Sir, I don't know who you are.
Concerned?
Exactly. But how, how did you hear about, how did you hear about tonight's? There you go. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Thoughts? Your thoughts?
Uh, well, that's what I'm, I don't know, my total tax, though, I don't know what, I, I didn't look to see what my city tax, how much it would run up, so I'm just, you know, I'm taking my tax drive and doing it again in the past, it's a year, it's not much.
Would you, if, if you don't mind me asking, the value of your home, is it the same as last year, or did it go down? Or, the value of your home went up after the storm?
No, well, no, actually, no.
Yeah, 'cause that, that happens, that, what's happening right now is a lot of values went down, or stayed the same, after the storm. And that's, that's why they're maybe not gonna, if we go, will not see much of a difference in the tax bill if we see at the effective tax rate. So if it's going higher than the effective tax rate, then you'll see that slight decrease. But it all depends on what the property value of, of the home was, was before and after the storm.
None of us do.
Ram, what, what, explain what you're trying to say.
Okay, Mr. ...
Like this right here, it doesn't really affect everybody, right?
Only the property owner.
It doesn't affect anybody that owns a house. It depends on their, on their appraised value.
Yeah, but it depends on how old the property...
If they have the exemption.
If they have the exemption, you're talking about people that have the exemption. Yes, they ha- and they have to have applied for the exemption. And this needs to be their primary residence, you can't have two houses and have two exemptions. That's the thing. But you need to, those people literally need to go into the appraisal district and apply for that exemption, if they don't have it. All right, and I believe the exemption is, is for age, disability, I believe veterans get that exemption now, because we voted that several years ago. So, there are several reasons why you can get it, but you have to go and apply for it, it's not automatic.
Now, will this affect, for instance, that's what your question, will it affect them, the ones that have exemptions already?
No.
With that's going, if we go up with the, the tax rate?
No, I, I wanted to know what would be the difference between going up on other parts of our, like the water bill, versus, what would be the difference doing that versus what we're doing now? Uh, just a question.
How many accounts have we lost?
Yeah, I mean...
Like, in other words, because when you do the water bill, you're actually affecting every single person.
You're affecting residents and non-residents, peo- well, yeah, all your residents here, yeah, regardless if they live here full-time or not, yes. Everybody that has property, yes, I... Are you, you're gonna, you're gonna do the base tax plus the base rate plus in addition to the base rate, or you're just doing a base rate increase? 'Cause there's a base rate, you, you have, you can use up to five thousand gallons, and this is gonna be your bill sixty-something dollars, which is, if you have garbage and all of that, that's what your bill is. If you're gonna in- increase your base rate and your consumption rate, now you're talking money. If you're just increasing your base rate by a dollar, well, you're only gonna increase revenues by the number of accounts that you have. If you have thirty-five hundred accounts, that's thirty-five hundred dollars a month. But if you increase your ver- your base rate plus your consumption rate, now you're gonna be making a little bit more money, but I need to know...
Now, you're affecting not just the property owner, but you're affecting every single person that's got a water bill.
Correct.
Versus, like, uh, in other words, if you have an apartment complex, your, your, your apartment complex is worth this much money, so it's only going this much, but if you have three hundred tenants, you know, there's a lot on loan.
But when you think about, how many apartments have we lost?
Yeah, yeah, we've lost a lot. They're coming online slowly, but, yeah, I mean, and you can do both. Yeah, I mean, we can do the water discussion next week, if you want. I'm all about it.
But, one of the things you have to remember, if you go up on your water bill, it can only be used for only certain projects.
The water...
It, it's what you designated for.
No, it's got, it has to be...
No, the water revenue goes for the water in store. It is the enterprise fund. It can, in a lot of cities, the enterprise is the cash cow. The water is the cash cow. Right now, it isn't our cash cow, 'cause we lost a lot of customers. Right now, we're losing a lot of water because of all these breaks. So it isn't the cash cow that it's supposed to be. But a lot of cities raid that fund and move that money into the general fund, because they make so much money in the water. But, but right now, we're not there, because right now, I mean, we just don't have the revenues that we had before. But we do have the expenses, unfortunately, because we have the personnel, and we have the water leaks that are happening, and we have that water loss that we need to pay for.
Our infrastructure is terrible, and we've got to, you know, we've gotta do something about that.
Increasing the property tax rate is a step forward into potentially repairing our infrastructure. The only way we're gonna repair the infrastructure is going out for a bond, and nobody likes that. But that's the reality, it's gonna take millions of dollars to do that. And for you to be able to be at a place where you're gonna be able to repay that, you need to show the bond, our S and P, our bonding company, to let them know that we, we mean business, we are, we mean, we're serious when it comes to putting the city back together and standing back.
And what we're talking about here is not that citywide need for disruption. We're talking about the day-to-day stuff, that's literally like the break, that is...
Yeah.
That's what this, whatever you decide to do.
That's what this money's gonna go for. This money's gonna go for those breaks, for that money to, we're not adding anything to the budget other than this money, put it in aside, for those breaks, for those line repairs, for those thirty thousand, forty thousand dollar emergencies that were, that will happen. It's not, are they gonna happen, they will. It's not that we're gonna go and put in a new police car for the chief, or we're gonna increase salaries, none of that. None of that is gonna happen. We're, we're not gonna do any... We're, we're not gonna do any of that. Is this money is strictly going to be the only, what, the change you're gonna see is gonna be in, it going to the utility fund to, to augment that money to, to repair those line breaks and those water leaks and those, you know, sewer lines.
So that's all this, the tax increase is gonna go for?
For right now.
Just to.
So you're saying if we raise the rate to the seventy-nine cents, it's gonna be a hundred and one thousand?
It depends.
A hundred and one dollars per hundred thousand.
Eighty-one, I think it's.
The, the column, yes, the column that's important is the fourth column. That's the number that, the column is gonna tell us how much more we're gonna get than what we've already budgeted.
Where's the additional tax?
There you go.
Two-seventy-one, eighty?
Yeah, that's.
That's what the city will, will.
Correct, those are gonna be our, our, you know, in excess of what we've already budgeted.
So, according to this, again, if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes are at seven-hundred and thirty-five dollars, correct?
Where we're at right now, yes.
So if we raise it to the highest amount on this chart that you're showing, which is eighty cents, it is gonna go up to eight-hundred and five dollars. That is a difference of seventy dollars per year.
Correct.
And of course, if it's a two-hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be a hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty, right.
Three-hundred thousand, so.
Right.
Not a lot.
No, it isn't a lot.
Seventy dollars a year? And there you go.
No, you, you need an election, no, no. We're not here to get re-elected, we're here to do the right thing for the community. You need an election for the, for the tax rate. When you raise it that high.
But we've gotta do the right thing for the community.
When you raise it higher than the rollback rate.
Yes.
Which is?
The eighty cents. This is the, the last line that it put, that's the highest.
I would say eighty. I would say eighty and we can talk about it more, but at least we can, we can go lower.
You can go lower, you cannot go higher, like, like she said, yes. Yeah, there's no more numbers. I can put them there. You don't want them there.
Sandra. What amount would require us to have a tax rollback election? Is that the eighty cents?
No, higher than what's on here.
Higher than, okay.
I didn't put anything higher than what we can require that, because I didn't wanna trigger that.
Okay.
But I can give you those numbers.
So they're talking about eighty cents, but just for clarity, there's two eighty cents on here.
Cause they're the half cents.
The last one?
Yeah. Eighty and a half cents, that's what it is. Cause they're, they're increments of half cents.
That's just what I say, just go first.
I know we have to do it.
Do the proposed rate at the highest and then we have the public hearings, then that gives us time also to see, okay, this is how much more money is in the budget, what are the projects other than water and sewer? What are the things, you know, obviously cleanup is very important.
We need to hear from the public and hear what their constituents.
Yes, I agree. And, and then take it from there.
And it's our opportunity to educate the public on what we're saying here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, do we have to have a motion or something?
Yes, there is another paper in front of you.
Right here.
There's the other.
That says the, the motion. Yeah, Mary put in for them.
Is everybody ready? I'm gonna make a motion, motion setting is September the twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, as a date of adoption of the envelope tax rate of point eight-zero-five-one-nine-six for a hundred dollar valuation. Somebody has to speak up.
I'll second it. Aye.
Opposed? You have to say opposed, somebody might be opposed.
Okay.
I think he left mad.
Oh, okay, so Billy opposed.
Billy opposed.
Billy opposed.
Not that we're gonna go there, Billy.
But we're not doing that, that's not our.
That's fine, that's fair.
I think I really have to look at these numbers.
First, second.
There's a second motion right under that, the motion setting the, the.
I make a motion that we set the public hearing for the envelope tax rate for September the thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and September the nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, during the regular city council meeting beginning at six P M. At City Hall six hundred with Cleveland, Aransas Pass, Texas. I can add zip code seventy-three-three-six.
I'll second that.
Ay yi yi. You still have time for discussion, Billy. There's still time.
This is not set.
No, no. It is, doesn't become official until September the twenty-fourth.
And, and I'm not all in favor of this eighty number either.
There is still.
If we need to go down.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is not, yes, correct. Yes, right. This is nothing. This is just giving you guys room for discussion and future date, yes.
And this will be discussed on the September fourth meeting, Gary? Will this be part of? If we have good, I think that's important. Can you email this to all of us, just so that we have, when we're talking to people, what we have accomplished? Well, that doesn't matter, typos don't matter.
It's not gonna go out as soon.
No, no, but, you know, as you're talking to people about what we have accomplished. Yeah, I have that one. Thank you, Sandra. I think we need to be someplace between here and there. I'll second that we adjourn.
Aye.